I call this meeting the Alexandria County Commission Order. We will begin with a moment of solemn meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. And to do the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We have a number of appointments this morning. At 9:15 we have Mary Alba. Will Mary be here today, Bob?
No, I'm her replacement. It's hard to tell over looking at me, I'm sure.
Well, we have a proclamation from the American Legion, 9:15. 9:30 we have Laura Meadows, Executive Director of the Upstate County Convention Division Bureau. We'll provide their annual report. We have an exit interview with former employee Krista Allman, which may lead to executive session. That's at 10:30. Then we have a 1 o'clock appointment at the Office of Emergency Management, 911 Center, out by the hospital. So we'll begin with our items for discussion, action, or approval. We have correspondence. I'm sorry, we will begin with the minutes, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
Good morning.
Thank you.
The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held a special meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, August 6, 2015, at 3:00 PM. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting into order. Present were J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Carrie Cutwright, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline Dinklocker, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved regular meeting minutes of July 3, 2015, as submitted, and the minutes of the joint meeting of the Upstate County Commission and the Cannon City Council, which was held in the Upstate County Commission Meeting Room at 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 6, 2015, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the request for proposal and advertisement for requests for bids for police vehicles. Seal bids must be received no later than 9:00 AM on August 27, 2015. Seal bids will be open, reviewed, and read aloud by the Upstate County Commission at 10:30 AM on Thursday, August 27, 2015. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of correspondence from Charles McKenny, Assistant Chief Inspector Office of the West Virginia State Auditor, concerning services to be provided to the Upstate County Commission for fiscal year ended June 3, 2014. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the acknowledgement of understanding of services. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the contract agreement and related documents for acceptance of the West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Number 16-CC-24 in the amount of $204,676. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the property use agreement between the Upstate County Commission and the Upstate County Youth Baseball Association. The agreement was previously signed on March 12, 2015, by the Commission but is being redone due to the absence of notary certifications for signatures of youth baseball association officers. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved request from Juanita Adams, magistrate, for use of parking space that will be available upon the retirement of Kay Holland effective August 22, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the employment of Jerika A. Phillips, as full-time E911 communications center telecommunicator, at the rate of $11 per hour, effective August 10, 2015, as requested by Steve Liner, Director. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of Heather Park as fire fee clerk, effective August 7, 2015. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the employment of Heather Park as chief tax deputy, at the rate of $19.25 per hour, effective August 10, 2015, as requested by Sheriff David Kaufman. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the employment of Amy Knight as Lewis County Case Manager for the Community Corrections Program as requested by Evan Thomas, Community Corrections Program Director, and approved by the Community Corrections Board on August 5, 2015, effective dating of August 2, 2015, at the rate of $11.25 per hour. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the request from the James W. Curry Library and Park Advisory Board for the immediate termination of Judith Fitzgerald, Assistant Librarian. After discussion on motion by Carrie Cutwright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Teresa Key as appointee to be the Cannon Upstate Board of Health for a five-year term ending on June 30, 2020. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the reappointment of Bob Wayby to the Upstate County Farmland Protection Board. Mr. Wayby's four-year term will expire on June 30, 2019. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission approved the reappointment of Rex Reader to the Upstate County Farmland Protection Board. Mr. Reader's four-year term will expire on June 30, 2019. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Upstate County resident Karen Harris, requesting the Commission to make it mandatory for the supervisor of the Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility to maintain a Facebook page for the facility. Jan Cochran, the facility director, appeared before the Commission and advised that she had been keeping a Facebook page previously but had discontinued it. Ms. Cochran maintains a website for the facility and stated that her decision to discontinue the Facebook page was due to redundancy of information that was already on the webpage, ongoing drama related to the Facebook participants, as well as the amount of time required for maintaining Facebook. Ms. Cochran advised that her contact information is readily available to rescues and anyone who may need her assistance and requested that the Commission support her decisions not to maintain the Facebook page. After discussion, J.C. Rafferty asked for a motion to make it mandatory for the Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility to maintain a Facebook page. The issue died for lack of a motion. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from NESCO Incorporated, providing that NESCO Incorporated will be conducting blasting activities in accordance with all state federal laws and, as approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, commencing August 21, 2015, and continuing through August 20, 2016. Number two, building permits, July 20, 2015. Three, agendas and notices and/or notice of means as listed. Four, meeting minutes, none. Five, meetings as listed. Six, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following thorough arrangements, annual recounts as listed. The Commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Carrie Cutwright, the Commission adjourned at 4:40 PM.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute as read? If not, I would request a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. We still have about five minutes before our first appointment, so I'll continue down for items for discussion, action, or approval. We have correspondence from Equal D. Dickinson, Justice Program Specialist, Division of Justice and Community Services regarding recent West Virginia Court Security Grant Award. That award was the amount of $2,360 and was for the purpose of upgrading curtains and window treatment for the Office of Magistrate Juanita Adams. We have number two, review of Apple A. Brown's property photographs showing lions as requested by Leonard dated July 14, 2015. That was a matter that we had sent a letter to Ms. Brown relative to our safe structures ordinance, requesting that she address issues with her property, which apparently, based on the photographs, she has brought herself into compliance with the county ordinance. We have approval and signature of Leonard dated August 4, 2015, to David Godwin, requesting Mr. Godwin to furnish the State Auditor's Office with information involving matters to which he has been engaged and to which he has devoted substantial attention on behalf of Upstate County in the form of legal consultation, orchestration, or, excuse me, representation as of June 30, 2014, and he has executed that communication. We have approval and signature of maintenance contract usage amounts with Software Systems Incorporated. Carrie, could you please give a little detail on that? Basically, list the prices for various services to be provided by them for our communications.
Yes, this is a system that most of your offices use, including the TAPS office, the assessor's office, and the prosecuting attorney's office. And this is a general maintenance agreement that you enter into each year. I recommend that you select the same level of service that you had in previous years.
Yes, so, okay, the first thing we do then is go back to number three item. I've got it ahead of myself again, pushing it today. Approval and signature of letter dated, so we can approve that letter that prosecuting attorney Godwin sent to the State Auditor's Office.
It will be approving your signature of the letter sent to David Godwin.
Right, okay. Is there approval for the President to sign that?
I believe that we have approved the President to sign that letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. And do we have approval for the maintenance contract that Carrie just explained?
Still moved.
All in favor say aye. No second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Next, we have approval and signature of SAS 99 Questionnaire and Management Inquiry for fiscal year ending June 30, 2014, to be submitted to West Virginia State Auditor. That form basically is a checklist certifying that certain items relative to, as required by the State Auditor, is in compliance, and it has to be signed by the President of the Commission. So I would request approval for this, because the Commission signs such a questionnaire.
Still moved.
Is it seconded?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Next, we have approval of Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility volunteer Danielle Davis. Is there a motion to approve her to serve as a volunteer? There's seconded?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries.
Would you like to get back to item number one? Is that all required and for all for signature as well?
Okay. Didn't have approval there. Going back to item one, do we approve the President signing that grant, award relative to magistrate's office? Is there a motion to approve that here?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Signing my own, okay. Okay, and it's now only about one more minute, so we'll go down to information items. We have correspondence with Sarah E. Miller, Justice Program Specialist, regarding the victims of crime act, grant period extension to the current grant 12-BA-050, and reopening of the previous grant 13-BA-032 to sustain personnel slash contractual through September 30, 2015. Basically, that is an adjustment. The original grant was the amount of $34,621. The Justice Programs has added $2,276.59 to that grant. So the current amount of the grant is $36,451.59. So we've been enhanced by a little over $2,200 in that grant, which goes to the prosecutor's office. We have memorandum from Shane Whitehair, Executive Director of Region 7 Planning and Development Council, regarding a one-day workshop of August 26, 2015, whereby training on the protection of public source water streams and streams. We have correspondence with Michelle M. Hall, Clerk of the West Virginia Court of Claims, Crime Victims Compensation Fund, serving as a notice that the Crime Victims Compensation Fund will be reducing its payments for health care services to victims by 50%, which will constitute payment in full for those services effective August 17, 2015. And this is in compliance with West Virginia Code, Section 14-2A-19B, captioned rates and limitations for health care services. As I understand it from reviewing the correspondence, victims of crime can be compensated for health-related injuries, and this has been reduced 50%. I'm assuming it's based on the budgetary constraints that the state legislature and the governor's office have identified with that program. It is now 9:15. We have representatives from the American Legion. Bob, if you'd like to come forward and require a proclamation. And Ed can also come up. Ed, go to the podium, Bob.
I'll vote you in, okay.
And then we'll have you come up, Bob.
After we make sure you're not arguing.
You got the proclamation, right?
We do not, maybe.
Yes, you do.
We'll be signing it, but normally you read it and then we sign it.
I don't have a copy of it.
Oh, well, we'll make one available, too. That's what happened when Mary Alba was initially going to be here.
Well, Mary told me that you had indicated that we should make copies of the proclamation and then you would read it, but that's...
We can read it.
We can read it if you wish. We can, depending how you would like it. I can do that if you wish.
It would probably be better, because I don't see that well.
Okay, before the Upstate County Commissions, VJ Day, August 14, 2015. Reaction Japanese surrender. Whereas Japan's devastating surprise aerial attack on the U.S. Naval Base at Pearl Harbor on Oahu, Hawaii, on December 7, 1941, capped a decade of deteriorating relations between Japan and the United States and led to an immediate U.S. declaration of war the following day. Japan's ally Germany, led by Adolf Hitler, then declared war on the United States, turning the war raging in Europe into a truly global conflict. Over the next three years, superior technology and productivity allowed the Allies to wage an increasing one-sided war against Japan in the Pacific, inflicting enormous casualties while suffering relatively few. In 1945, in an attempt to break Japanese resistance before a land invasion became necessary, the Allies were consistently bombarding Japan from air and sea. Whereas in Washington on August 14, President Harry S. Truman announced news of Japan surrender in a press conference at the White House. Quote, "This is the day we have been waiting for since Pearl Harbor. And this is the day when fascism finally dies, as we always knew it would," end quote. Jubilant Americans declared August 14, quote, "Victory over Japan Day," end quote, or, quote, "VJ Day," end quote. Whereas in remembrance thereof, as the President of the Upstate County Commission hereby claims, August 14 is VJ Remember It's Day. Place for the signature. So I will gladly sign that on behalf of the County Commission. Do you wish to make any comments, Bob?
Yes. My comments would be, in looking around here, I'm sure that probably I was the only one living when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. I was seven years old when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, and it was a day that I will certainly always remember. As well as VJ Day, some of you were probably alive when, perhaps, for VJ Day, and many of you were not. But that was a glorious day. Those two days, the beginning and the end, were something that lives with us all during our life.
Well, it affects us today in our history. That world conflict, we still are impacted by it today in terms of historically the Cold War, which started shortly after the end of the World War II hostilities and theoretically until about 1990, when the Berlin Wall came down, the Russian Republics separated. But we see manifestations of similar actions that occurred prior to World War II occurring today. And there are historians and people as your age or those who do study history and remember history, I can see the parallels between what occurred in the 1930s and what we are somewhat faced with today, different levels.
I will just say as memory that, none of you having probably been alive from this time, that we were prepared for the attack on Pearl Harbor by way of the Great Depression. You know, people were looking for work, they had no jobs. When the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, all the young men and women were ready to go and fight, and they did that. They volunteered to go fight. And we at home had the rationing, which many of you do not even know about. They rationed gasolines, we got tokens to buy gasolines with, gasoline with. Sugar was rationed, rubber, we had synthetic rubber. All of these things took place from sacrifices that we made. And many of you don't even know that during the time from, the time that the Second World War began, the automobile manufacturers ceased making automobiles and started making Jeeps and Tacs and Planes and everything that was necessary to win that war. Wouldn't it be nice now when we have supposed wars, that we would look at it as a win?
And we should not forget, and it is November, Veterans Day in November. The Sons of Upstate County, a listing of this, as a non-resident, native of Upstate County, but when I first saw that list of the Upstate County residents who died in that conflict, substantial number, a substantial number, with many, many names that are current, common names in Upstate County. And so you wonder, the uncles, the sons, the brothers, how that impacted families in this county. Hope never to face that again, but it is a tribute to those and is, I think, your generation is called the greatest generation for a number of reasons, but not the least of which is a response to violence that was inflicted upon America and Europe by Germany, Japan, and Italy initially. So we do take this seriously, and at least I know that we do. But my father being a baby for 20 years during the Cold War and serving in World War II in Korea, I grew up under that legacy. And I take it very seriously.
I accept the proclamation on behalf of the American Legion regarding...
People sign it? And then I thank you for your service, though you're a Purple Heart winner.
We also have a...
I'll give to him a little later.
Okay, you got a letter. Proclamation, okay, and then aside, do you wish me to read it as well? Do you wish me to read it as well?
Yes, please. As I say, I don't have it.
This is captioned, "Purple Heart Day, August 7. Each year in the United States, August 7th represents or celebrates Purple Heart Day. A decoration consisting of a purple heart-shaped piece of silk having an arrow edge of silver stitched with the word "Merrit" across the face was created by General George Washington on August 7, 1782. Considered to be the first official military combat badge of the United States Armed Forces, this is called the, quote, "badge of military merit," end quote. Official successor decoration of the badge of military merit is the purple heart. General George Washington said the following regarding the badge of military merit. Quote, "The general ever desires to cherish virtuous ambition in his soldiers, as well as to foster and encourage every species of military merit, directs that whenever any singularly notorious action is performed, the author of it shall be permitted to wear on his facings over the left breast the figure of a heart in purple cloth or silk edged with narrow lace or binding. Not only essences of unusual gallantry, but also of extraordinary fidelity and essential service in any way shall meet with a due regard reward. Before this favor can be conferred on any man, the particular fact or facts on which it is to be grounded must be set forth to the Commander in Chief, accompanied with certificate or certificates from the commanding officers of the regiment and brigade to which the candidate for reward belonged, or other incontestable proofs. Upon granting it, the name and regiment of the person with the actions so certified are to be enrolled in the Book of Merit, which will be kept at the orderly office. Men who have merited this last distinction to be suffered do pass all guards and seminals, which officers are permitted to do. The road to glory in a patriot army in a free country is thus open to all. This orders also to have retrospect to the early stages of war and to be considered as a permanent one," end quote. Celebrate by honoring everyone you know who has received a Purple Heart." And it continues, "I J.C. Rafferty, President of Upstate County Commission, hereby proclaim August 7, 2015, as Purple Heart." Location for my signature is fixed. And that, when I'm telling the resolution...
Also accept that proclamation on behalf of the American Legion. And this time I would like to introduce a Purple Heart recipient in Ed Smith. He receives his Purple Heart as a Marine while serving in Vietnam. He wants to say anything, we'll leave it up to him. But I just honor anyone. We have several in the American Legion that had Purple Hearts. But it's just an honor to be with someone who was willing to be wounded on behalf of their country.
Well, I've known him for a good number of years, and he is very self-effacing about someone that will talk about these things. And there's been a number of members that I've known through our church, comparatively, in World War II service. Many of them, not all, have passed at this point in time, who also had that distinction. And they're all men of fine regard and fine repud. And we're very fortunate, as you've stated, to have such patriots among our citizens. Upstate County can be very proud of the fire in service to the military and to the country in times of emergency and war.
We will take the proclamation.
Yes, sorry. Okay, having appeared before the Commission, proclamations having been read, is there a motion to authorize the President of the Commission to sign both proclamations?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. And I think we have some photographers present who often will take photographs and people may need proclamations or requesting proclamations, so I'll come back to you. Have you upgraded your camera? You lost it.
Thanks for calling it up.
Amanda, using your tablet there, so your camera can roll in. Thank you, too, again.
She's going to give us the proclamation.
Oh, she's got it. You are well and determined to get those proclamations. Okay, we now continue with the items for information. And we have, again, Upstate County Health Department Newsletter for August 2015. We have the Upstate County Family Resource Network Newsletter for August 2015. We have the Upstate County Family Resource Network Director's Report for July 2015. And we have agendas and notices of meetings. We have meeting minutes. We have meetings to be attended by board members, through commissioners. We have appointments needed or upcoming for various boards, vacancies that are listed. And our next regular meeting of the Upstate County Commission will be August 20 at 9:00 AM at the Upstate County Courthouse. It is now 9:30. And there is Laura Meadows, who is the Executive Director for the Upstate County Convention Division Bureau, and she will present... County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and she will present her annual report. Good morning, Laura.
Hello. I've got copies for each of you, and if anybody else would like a copy, just there.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want a copy?
We can make copies if anyone needs.
Okay, so this is our annual report. The Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau, we ended our last fiscal year on June 30th, so we've been able to look back and review what's happened in the past year, gather all of our accomplishments, plan for this current fiscal year, and we just wanted to update the county commission. On the top of the list, we, this past fiscal year, saw an 8% increase in the hotel motel tax in City of Buchanan and in Upsher County, which is a wonderful increase to see. Whenever, you know, the economy gets bad and people, the first thing that they cut out of their budgets would be leisure travel and all the extras that we consider, luxuries in life. So to see that increase was really nice. I also went back through the history of the CDB, since we've been formed as an organization, and we've seen at least a 5% increase every single year. So we see a steady increase, we haven't seen a decrease any year. Oil and gas always plays a part in that as well, but I'm happy to have an increase in the hotel motel tax, which is how the CDB's funded. In addition to just general hotel motel tax, we also are able to receive advertising grants from the Division of Tourism. This past year, we received $7,500. That went for an advertising campaign that's called Stay the Weekend, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that campaign here in a bit. I also looked back in past years. In past years, we were able to receive sometimes $15,000 to $20,000 of that advertising grant money from the state, and you can just see that the money's dwindling, it's harder and harder to receive, but we still take every opportunity we can to get what I call free money. So we're happy to get anything we can. So whenever we talk about our advertising campaigns, we have a lot of different things that are going on. Our general advertising campaign, we call what Small Town Charm is all about. And whenever the CDB was formed, we did a lot of benchmarking, we did a lot of market research to try to find out, what do people think of whenever they think of Buchanan and Upsher County? And small town always came up, and we always had a charm, kind of an atmosphere to it. So we created this kind of umbrella campaign of what Small Town Charm is all about. So we always feature, you know, downtown Buchanan, and then whenever you leave downtown area, you can really get into the wild and wonderful aspects of West Virginia with outdoor recreation, camping, that type of thing. So under the Small Town Charm campaign, we have a new campaign that we started, it's actually not new, we've been doing it for just about two, three years, but it's called Stay the Weekend. And it's a little bit more focused, where we're featuring six to seven different events and festivals that happen in Upsher County. And we're inviting people basically to come to that event, that festival, and then stay the weekend for everything else that we have in Upsher County. And you'll see one of the advertising creatives that we have, and it's actually featuring the Blast From The Past event, and you can just get an idea. It says Stay the Weekend, features the event, people will click on that ad, and it will be directed to our website, which gives a full schedule of what's happening for that event, and then link them to other things that we have in the area. So that's been really successful. It came out of, we created that campaign kind of on the fly, but whenever we did it the very first time, it was extremely successful, so we just continue it every single year. Another thing that we're always working on is a campaign called 33 Things to Do Along Route 33. We partner with the Lewis County CDB and the Randolph County CBVs, so it's a regional partnership, and we've been discussing possibly putting Tucker County in on this campaign as well. But it's fairly simple, we are listing 33 things to do along our major highway that runs through our area. We try to promote this as a three-day trip, and we're, our geographic target market is three hours outside of Upsher County, so, you know, three-hour driving distance to spend three days along Route 33. And we also try to say that a lot of the events and activities and, you know, landmarks that you can visit, you can do under $333. So it's been really interesting to work with other CBVs. We spread our money around, it's a fun campaign. So we, again, we continually add to that marketing strategy every single year. And one other thing is, we also partner with quite a few other CBVs for a regional advertising campaign for golfing. And that's spread between Montegoal County, Marion, Harrison, Lewis, and Upsher. So all of those counties are listing, here are various golf courses in the area. So we have the Buchanan Country Club listed with Stonewall's Golf Course. So it's really good for us, because we have wonderful facilities here, but to be listed with Pete Dye and the Stonewall Resort Golf Course, it's wonderful for us. So you've got people who like to travel the area and just hit different golf courses. So again, we try to partner with people as much as possible, because it just helps our budget, and it's a good way to get increased exposure for Upsher County. One thing that we started internally in the CDB is, we dedicate a line out of every year for an internal advertising grant program. So we set aside $45,000 to $5,000, and local businesses, local organizations, local events can come to us and receive up to $750 to help advertise what they're doing. There are some little stipulations, but we try to keep it as easy and loose as possible to kind of customize it for what people need. And you could see a list of who we funded and the different activities that we funded for. One of the big things that we really started is a Facebook, a Facebook advertising run, really, and it's extremely successful. We ran a Facebook campaign for the Almost Heaven BBQ Bash, and I think they had impressions of over 100,000 people that actually saw the ad on Facebook, and I think it was really successful. Just quickly, we are constantly on social media, Facebook and Twitter, our Facebook page is reaching 3,000 likes, and every single day, we're able to have a conversation and engage with the traveling public, and even locals, you know, locals don't always know what's happening, so it's good to communicate with them and let them know, and then they can spread that word out through their family members and friends. Every year, we produce a 29-page travel guide, and we usually print about 20,000 every year. This past year, we were able to distribute 8,000, 18,500. And those are distributed locally, of course. We also do mass shipments, two to three times a year, to all the welcome centers in West Virginia. And then as we're writing advertisements, somebody might see our ad in a magazine, and they say, "Oh, that looks pretty interesting, I want more information." So then that publisher will give us contact information for that individual, and then we do direct mailings to them. So direct mailings are huge, we probably send out, I'd say about 8,000 travel guides a year, just from direct mailings for people who ask for specific information about the county. Our website, I'm constantly tweaking our website, adding it, every single year, we try to do something different to keep our website fresh and innovative. We had over 25,000 visits to our website, and it's 25% increase. I thought that was absolutely tremendous, that we had that large of a bump. And a lot of that's connected to, a lot of our advertisements are now online, so we're getting a lot of clicks over into our website. We partner wonderfully with Wesleyan, they have amazing programs, their undergrad, grad program, their MBA program, we have a service scholar through them, we're constantly working together, they do a lot of projects based on the CDB, and we're just providing resources across the board. We are an accredited CDB, we received our accreditation whenever we were first formed, and that stands for every three years. So this past year, I just went through the reaccreditation process, and we were reaccredited, which basically means there's the West Virginia Association of CBVs, and they're kind of like a monitor that makes sure CBVs are operating properly, they have a true marketing campaign, they're reaching the target market that we should be reaching. So it's a really amazing program, they give a lot of educational opportunities, but we were reaccredited, that will last for three years, and then we'll apply again for reaccreditation. And you can also just see a list of different places where we list our advertisements, that's either online or print publications. On the flip side, one of the biggest things that happened this past year was the Event Center at Brushy Ford, with the new Buchanan Ready and a Center on Brushy Ford Group. It's been a huge learning curve, for sure, it's something new, every single day, I can't imagine that I would have to figure out why the ice maker's not working, but we figured it out, and it's good. So I mean, like I said, it's very different, but it's fun. We've got an event center manager, his name's Sean Harris, he came on board March of this year, and he actually has experience in event planning, so it's been wonderful to have somebody who can take that on, manage it, interact with people who are trying to book the facility. We do have lots of events scheduled into 2016. Sean just gave a report to our board yesterday, but it looks like we have just about a wedding every single month that's going to be booked at the facility. This month alone, we've had four to six, I can't remember, events, a lot of just daytime meetings, people coming in to use the facility, so it's really starting to pick up. And we are developing a marketing campaign. This past year, because we were new, we weren't ready to advertise, we wanted to get all these little bugs worked out, and we feel like now's the time that we've kind of got everything worked out, we have a decent procedure. So our advertising campaign should launch, I was hoping August, but it looks like it's going to launch September. But you can get an idea of where ads are going to be focused. And a lot of it's going to really target meetings, conferences, statewide banquets, because we're in an excellent position geographically and just price-wise to bring in a lot of statewide organizations to come and hold their meetings at the Event Center at Brushy Ford. Again, the event center, even though it's under the CDB umbrella, they have their own dedicated Facebook page, they're going to have their own dedicated travel guide-type piece of literature, so their own website's developed for that, so it's been really fun to see that progress. And then just coming up for this current year, we are working on a community video between a lot of different organizations, one of which would be the county commission, City of Buchanan, and other groups. We're working on a retire West Virginia application, which the CDB's spearheading that, and while I don't think it's necessarily just a CDB project, I'm able and willing to do that, but it does affect retirees, do affect the tourism industry, because retirees-
How does one be certified as a retirement community? What elements do you have to address?
Again, it's kind of, whenever I looked at the application, I said, "We've got this, it's entirely easy." I mean, you have to highlight your housing, and granted, we have, we have a need for housing, but we do have housing available, especially with the Pringle Housing retirees, and they have that age requirement, I think that's a good asset to us. We also have to highlight our medical facility, so we've got St. Joseph's Year, we've got ambulance services, all the health clinics in the area. We have to locate all the shopping and amenities that are available, and are committed, can a retiree easily access their prescription medication, so we were highlighting all the different pharmacies, and that they're spread all over the county.
We have the educational facility there, Wesleyan, and the walk trail, I think those are all-
Exactly. That was one really interesting thing. One of it was adult education, and I guess Wesleyan in the past had a hostel, is that appropriate word? Not hostel.
Hostile.
I'm sorry?
It could be hostel, where they would stay temporarily.
Yes, okay, whatever, it's quite stubborn, yeah. They had a hostel program for adult, people who are interested in education, that's kind of gone by the wayside, but we've been having conversations with Wesleyan to say, "Let's try it again, let's see if it's something that could be developed." So, and they do have a lot of things, just without a specified program, so Wesleyan's another-
They have a senior center too, which has-
Absolutely, volunteer opportunities. So like I said, whenever I looked at the application, I said, "This is easy, it's just putting it on paper, documenting what we have." And again, it's just kind of, from what I've gathered, it's not really a state-affiliated group that will designate you as a retire West Virginia community, but they have connections to state offices, but it's just kind of a nonprofit association that we can receive that designation from. And there's only six or seven in the state that are retired, does, retiree designation community, so again, I think this will be a big one for Buchanan. And then of course, we're just always working on different marketing strategies, how we communicate with the public. One other thing, we just wrote a $10,000 advertising campaign to the Division of Tourism on behalf of the Strawberry Festival, since this will be the 75th anniversary. And that, should it be approved, we don't know if it's approved yet, but should it be approved, it would fund the creation of a new website for the Strawberry Festival, and then some direct advertisements to help get the word out that this is the 75th, that it's going to be a wonderful event. That's all I have, do you have any questions?
Is it all?
Yeah, I tried to run through it quickly.
Well, I do have one question.
Yes.
Thirty-three things to do on Route 33. Well, hopefully, Quarter Eight should be completed in not-too-distant future, I think that will be designated Route 48.
Yeah.
So you'll have to change your literature to 48 things to do on Route 48.
We joked that we'd have the 33 and then plus 15.
Okay, very good. Is there any questions?
Has anyone in the tourism industry expressed interest in serving on the CDB as a commission representative? Because I know that's one of our vacancies right now.
Yes, we've been going back and forth, who I would really like for the county commission to consider winning is the superintendent of Audra State Park, and he and I have been going, this is kind of his busy season too, but we've been going back and forth, and I left him a voicemail, he said he was interested, he keeps calling me back, so I wanted to have that conversation before I passed his information on you all, but yeah.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I'd just like to thank you for all you do.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, at 10:30, we have another 45 minutes to wait for our exit interview with Krista Allman, and then get our 1 o'clock appointment. We have bills to pay.
I think there might be one or two individuals that want to approach you as well.
Did you wish to make a-
Yes.
Public statement? Identify yourself, we know who you are, but you identify yourself for the viewing audience.
Lisa Mills, and among other things, everybody knows I'm a major pet lover. I was out of town last week, I was actually in Atlanta on a buying trip for my shop, but I happened to be, well, I happened to be told that there was an issue brought forth mission about the Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility, that Facebook page.
Correct.
I asked some questions when I got, well, I asked some questions while I was gone, then I asked some more when I got back. And I found out that one of the issues is that Ms. Cochrane is claiming that, you know, there was all this drama, and the page had a lot of redundancy. Well, I don't know how many, three of you get on Facebook, do any of you?
I have no Facebook, I'm not a Facebooker.
You do?
Okay.
Okay. There's been something going on in our area that I can track for at least the last year, and that is, a lot of people are having dogs stolen, right out of their yards. Now, I've spoken with Sheriff Kaufman about this, and as a result, every time I see one posted again, my dog's missing and was taken from my yard, I always reply with, "Please immediately contact your local county sheriff," because he said that only by getting reports can they track and attempt to get the animal back. Well, I've not lost a dog, thank heavens, but one of my cats did go abole for a while, a while back, and I immediately called all the vets, I called the animal control facility, I sent pictures, I did everything. I can assure you that redundancy of my post was not in any way something I consider detrimental. Are there rescue pages? Yes. Do we need more? Always. As long as animals keep going missing, people need an outlet to try to find their pet. How many of you have pets? If, Buddy, if your pet went missing, would you limit the amount of people you told that it was missing to try to get it back?
My pet does go missing, but she returns after a couple of days.
Okay, JC, how about you? If your pet went missing?
I would check me out with the control center, I would maybe put something in the newspaper, and I would post some photographs, but that would be the extent of it. But I would, you know, where the mouth is more-
Absolutely. Now, I know that Ms. Cochrane said something about him, well, I'm going to add that here, it was implying that people get on there and create drama, whatever. Well, guess what, folks, you can make a Facebook page, it's easy as pie to make a Facebook page that people can't comment on. I have one for the Crown and Touch, it doesn't cost anything, it's an extra little click of the button when you set the page up, and it can be used strictly as an informative page. Easy as pie.
Isn't that what a website page is for?
No, it's a Facebook page.
But what's a website page?
Well, a website page is a whole lot more involved, and the easiest way I know to explain that to you is like this, the Crown and Touch has a website page. I can't do a blasted thing with it, because I am not that computer savvy or literate. The Facebook page, on the other hand, I can host, I can update new inventory pictures, announcements, whatever, that quick.
But what I'm, I'm under the understanding that Ms. Cochrane keeps the website page updated, and you get same information from the website?
Not necessarily, because it would be nice if, there's also a way to set up a Facebook page where before a comment or anything goes public, the person who is the administrator of that site has to review it and approve it first. This would be- This would be an opportunity for local people to get on there and say, "Listen, my dog went missing from my yard last night, I've contacted the sheriff, heck, I even called the state police, I've notified all my neighbors, I've called all the veterinarian clinics," I mean, there's a whole path that a pet owner goes through when their pet goes missing, if they're really serious about getting it back, and...
We did consult an attorney about the ability to decide whose post gets posted. Unfortunately, with a government website or web page, including Facebook, you cannot do that, because everyone would have the right to post, not just those who you feel will be unoffensive or not offensive.
Okay, but would it not be appropriate to state that the purpose of that page is strictly to give out information about pets available for adoption and/or missing pets?
That is the plan, to create just an information page, Jan is working with that, on that, and she's working with Agnes Queen in Lewis County to create that, since Agnes does have so much experience on Facebook.
Oh, yes, Agnes does, I swear, if everybody, hmm, that's a whole other subject. The one other thing I would like to suggest, and this is basically common knowledge, it has been for the last probably five to seven years, whenever a person looks on to see about adopting an animal, the way the animal's photographed makes all the difference in the world in whether or not that animal gets adopted. If you take a picture, if you pull a dog, say, a pound, and you take a picture of it in the cage, or with a, for want of a better word, a depressing background, that animal is not as likely to get adopted, as if you would merely take the animal outside in the light of day with maybe some grass in the background, that animal's going to get adopted three times faster. I really would like to see, and it's not that many more steps, when you go photograph them, to put them on the pet pages, or Facebook page, or even for that matter, to give to the newspapers, could we please take the animal someplace other than a gray institutional-looking wall with a stuffed-up floor, just try to make it, I hate to say happier, because an animal in a pound to me is never happy, but in a better situation, maybe, it's not that hard, it's a few more steps, eight or 10 steps at the most, to take it outside, but those are two things I would like, I would like you all to be thinking about. Number one, do I think that the pound needs a Facebook page? I absolutely do. I don't care if there's 100 rescue pages or animal facility pages out there, if you're the person missing your beloved pet, that's still long enough. So I would hope that you all would reconsider that, or maybe find a way of voting on it again, because I really think we need a Facebook page for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. At least, if for no other reason, let people know the newest animals that have come in, so that if someone's searching for their pet, they know to go get it right then before it's in there long enough to develop some sort of an ailment or a problem, especially this time of year with all the overcrowding. Do you all have any questions?
There's a question.
What do people steal dogs for?
I'm purely speculating, and it actually turns my stomach that even, even, let this thought cross my mind. Training fight dogs, use them as bait. If you have a dog that is not aggressive in nature, it can be used as a bait dog, and it doesn't matter if it's big or small, a lot of times, I'll start with puppies, though we can use kittens and cats. There are other reasons they take them, and again, I know people have heard me say this a million times, well, let's make a million one. There are three dispositions that most serial killers have had in common, those being, first and foremost, as children, they were chronic bed wetters. Secondly, as they progressed into their adolescence, they became fixated with fire, not to the point of becoming an arsonist, but they loved to watch it burn. The third thing, when they were further into adolescence, they start doing things to family pets, and then the neighbor's pets, and then any animal they can find, and that's basically their warm-up and their test program for when they go into people. So it is very important that if animals are disappearing, we take this very seriously, we make every attempt to find them, and so again, you know, are they being, is somebody harassing someone, sometimes the case will be, boy A breaks up with girl B, so despite her, or actually, she broke up with him, so despite her, he steals her dog and dumps it off someplace. Well, hopefully, it'll turn up in a pound, or hopefully, someone will find it, and then she has a way of possibly getting it back. But yes, I think we need a Facebook page, and I think we need it, it's as easy, I can take my iPhone, take a picture of dress, and in less than 30 seconds, I can have it on my business Facebook page. If you do it that quickly, you're a pet coming into the shelter. You don't have to take time if you don't want to, post everything other than found. Is this yours? But I do think it's something that we need, along with asking the county to be vigilant in, if your neighbor's missing a pet, try to help a lot. Always be alert, strange vehicles, strange license numbers, you don't know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, we'll start paying some bills until our 10:30 appointment.